Motion made in second any discussion. Here you know and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Purpose of tonight's meeting is a personnel misconduct hearing. Consider investigation report regarding violations of the city's personnel policies and consideration for council to go in a closed session to discuss this matter. The subject of tonight's hearing is Ms. Tammy Gimple. Is Ms. Gimple's option to have this as an open meeting or continue into closed session? Would you like to state your preference for this meeting? Tammy?
I'd like it open.
Can you stay at lower, please?
I'd like it open.
Open session? Okay, we'll continue with the open session. Mr. Nelson?
Thank you Mayor Voss and council members. I'll be speaking for a little while, so interrupt me as necessary. But I'm gonna start by reviewing how we're gonna go about the meeting tonight. First, I'll review the relevant personnel policies. And then we'll talk about how this investigation and process got started and how I was employed as a fact finder by the city council and city administrator to conduct this investigation. At which point, I'll summarize the facts that I found over the course of that investigation. At that point, it will be turned over to the fire chief and the city administrator for their recommendations. After that, Ms. Gimple will have the opportunity to respond to the factual findings recommendation and address the council. At that point, it will be the council's determination whether to act on any recommendations tonight or not. So that'll be the procedure for the meeting. So some background to get started here regarding Ms. Gimple's employment status. She's an employee of the city fire department. She's not a union member, is not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, and is not a veteran. Policies that apply to Ms. Gimple that we're here to discuss tonight are the city of East Bethel Personnel Policies and the East Bethel Fire Department Additional Personnel Policies. So specifically, the policies we're looking at are within the city of East Bethel Personnel Policy, Section 3.1. These policies, Section 3.1, identify what constitutes employment misconduct by any employee of the city. Some of these include the ability or unwillingness to perform the assigned job, the failure to follow orders of a direct supervisor or city administrator, the failure to follow through with completion of a work assignment, the inability to get along with fellow employees so that the work being done is hindered or not up to the required levels, dishonesty, including the intentional giving of false information, intentionally falsifying records, intentionally logging false time records for payroll, or making false statements when applying for employment, other misconduct or actions unbecoming of employee. The personnel policy makes clear that any conduct constituting employment misconduct as defined by Section 3.1 may result in discipline up to and including termination. In addition to Section 3.1, which we'll be focusing on this evening, of the city's personnel policy, there is an additional personnel policy that applies to the fire department specifically. A recent update to that policy was adopted on January 24th by this council. The fire department personnel policy makes clear that Section 3.1 of the city's overall personnel policy applies to fire department employees. It specifically adopts that provision. I refer to Section 1.1, scope of the additional personnel policies and purpose. Excuse me, purpose is Section 1.1, scope is Section 3.1. In addition to the misconduct provisions of the city's personnel policy, the fire personnel policy defines what are considered to be employment offenses. These include, in total, the failure to obey lawful orders or carry out instructions or perform routine duties or assigned, offenses against another firefighter or property, violation of the city's alcohol and drug policy, disruptive behavior and/or attitude, failure to abide by the department's operating guidelines, insubordination or profanity, harassment as defined by the most current version of the city of East Bethel Personnel Policies. Insubordination is defined as a major offense according to the fire department's additional personnel policies. Within that personnel policy, for a first violation of a major offense, a firefighter may be disciplined by written reprimand, suspension, and advisement on additional violations. For a second major offense violation, a firefighter may be terminated. So with that, we turn to the investigation. Those are the employment policies that we're focusing on tonight, and we turn to the investigation and how that came about. So the investigation arose following a coaching session that occurred with Ms. Gimple and the fire chief on November 17th of last year. At that coaching session, Fire Chief Ducharme met with Captain Gimple, and they discussed some deficiencies in her performance. And she was providing instruction on improvement. A coaching letter was provided to Ms. Gimple, and that coaching letter has been provided to you as Exhibit 2 to my report, and that's also been provided to Ms. Gimple. Coaching letter lays out why the coaching came about and states Chief Ducharme's expectations for moving forward, stating you must exercise better judgment and leadership with your crew, lead them in career and experience growth. When on scene, you must allow your crews to practice their skills. When leaving the stations with fire apparatus to an incident, you must allow firefighters who are at the station to ride in the first truck pending allowable seats available in emergency situations, using vulgar or demeaning language will not be acceptable. Failure to show immediate and sustained improvement in behavior or performance may result in disciplinary action. So that is the letter of coaching. Fire chief informed Captain Gimple that he would be following up on her performance improvement. The follow-up was scheduled on January 14th of 2020. On that date, Chief Ducharme met with Captain Gimple, and they discussed ongoing issues with Captain Gimple's performance, and the chief laid out his expectations. One of the expectations or requirements that Chief Ducharme had was that Captain Gimple provide a written plan of action about how she was gonna work with her subordinates. At that meeting, which both parties described as a difficult, heated meeting, Captain Gimple stated, according to Chief Ducharme, that she would not provide a written plan of action about how she was going to improve her performance as a fire department captain. And that was a requirement that was articulated by the fire chief and one that he reported she refused. At that time, or after the meeting, the chief recorded a written report on his account of the meeting and provided it to the city administrator. The following day, Captain Gimple provided a recounting of that meeting via email also to the city administrator. At that time, based on what was defined by the fire chief as an insubordinate attitude, that's how this investigation came about. And I was enlisted by the city administrator and confirmed by the council to do an employment investigation into the allegations involving Captain Gimple. Over the course of that investigation, I conducted 10 interviews with fire department employees, and I reviewed numerous documents, including the personnel policy that we've discussed, the fire department personnel policies, Captain Gimple's personnel file, emails from firefighters about Captain Gimple, Captain Gimple's emails to her superior officers and fellow officers, and the city administrator, Chief Ducharme's meeting notes from January 14th, Captain Gimple's correspondence to the city administrator the following day, and many of those are before you as exhibits to my report. So that constituted the record that I created and reviewed as part of this employment investigation. Based on my interviews and reviews of those documents, many of which are in front of you as exhibits to my report, I make the following findings of fact, that Captain Gimple has violated city and fire department personnel policies by being insubordinate to Chief Ducharme specifically on January 14th of 2020, when she refused to provide a written action plan about how she was gonna improve her relationship with her colleagues and the officers to which she is responsible for. Specifically, the policies violated were City of East Bethel Personnel Policy 3.14, which states its misconduct to failure to follow the orders of a direct supervisor or the city administrator, City of East Bethel Personnel Policy 3.19, which states its employment misconduct to failure to follow through with the completion of a work assignment, and also the fire department policy 9.2, which defines it as an offense to be insubordinate to a superior officer and to fail to carry out lawful orders, instructions, or perform any duties assigned. In addition to that, over the course of this investigation, I also concluded an employment policy was violated in the investigation itself, specifically Employment Policy 3.118, which states that dishonesty is employment misconduct. Chief Ducharme stated he required a written action plan. His memo to file indicates that he asked for a written action plan on how Captain Gimple is going to improve her relationship with her colleagues, and Captain Gimple's email to the city administrator states that Chief Ducharme asked for a written plan. In my interview with Captain Gimple, she expressly denied that a written plan was ever asked for and informed me that if one was asked for, she would have done it. Based on her own statements and the statements of the fire chief, I find that statement I also find that Captain Gimple violated City of East Bethel and Fire Department Personnel Policies by failing to get along with her fire department colleagues, by treating her colleagues with disrespect, and by exhibiting disruptive behaviors and attitudes in the workplace. This finding is based on my numerous interviews with firefighters who articulated ways in which they felt disrespected in the workplace by Captain Gimple, and how that was disrupting their own performance and the performance of the fire department. One of the things commonly cited was firefighters reporting that they were being left behind as they pulled into Station 2. How this works is that when someone's responding to a call, all firefighters have an application on their phone called Active 911. They indicate whether or not they're responding on Active 911, so you can tell which firefighter is responding to a call. First firefighter who arrives gets the vehicle ready and then waits for additional responding Depending on the vehicle and the type of call, a firefighter, a fire vehicle may hold up to six people, four to six people, depending on the vehicle, and it is frankly a judgment call on when a firefighter needs to leave, based on the type of call it is. That being said, numerous firefighters reported to me on multiple occasions at which they were pulling in or had arrived at the station, and Captain Gimple would pull out in the first responding vehicle without a full crew, with all those seats being filled. The, her superior officers, Deputy Chief Anderson, reported that he had provided instruction to Captain Gimple not to do that. As you can see, it's also part of Chief Ducharme's coaching letter on November, that's dated November 16th, but the coaching occurred on November 17th. Firefighters reported that Captain Gimple would acknowledge them as they were pulling in. One reported that she even waved. One reported that there was a honk, horn, but they, they were all reported as causing problems at the station because they, you know, feel like there's no point in them responding to calls, and they are in fact responding to calls less frequently. Captain Gimple stated that this did not happen, based on the, this never happened, that she never left a firefighter who was arrived or imminently arriving at the station behind. Based on the number of people who reported that happening, I find the statements credible that this in fact has occurred. In addition, multiple firefighters reported that Captain Gimple has a tendency to treat specifically her female colleagues differently or with greater disrespect than her male colleagues, and does not provide them with training or the opportunity to enhance their skills. They also reported to me that, well on scene, Captain Gimple doesn't provide firefighters opportunities to take action on medical calls specifically, that she performs all the tasks. Captain Gimple made clear to me that she enjoys teaching, enjoys training other firefighters, and felt that the younger, less experienced firefighters were not taking initiative on scene and should be doing so. And finally, there was an email exchange specifically regarding training that the department's training officer sent in January of this year, that firefighters could make up certain drill or training requirements by participating in the auxiliary breakfast, volunteering to help with the auxiliary breakfast. The training officer was told by Chief Ducharme to offer that opportunity, and she sent an email to all the firefighters stating that they could make up credits. Captain Gimple replied all to that email, so that every firefighter received her response, and it was a highly critical email and was perceived as very disparaging by the training officer and by the fire chief. I asked Captain Gimple about this. She responded that many firefighters agreed with her, that it, training opportunities, training drill credit should not be provided for working at the auxiliary. So based on these facts, I determined that there was, that Captain Gimple had violated two personnel policies. One was the city personnel policy 3.113, which states its employment misconduct to exhibit the inability to get along with fellow employees so that the work being done is hindered and not up to required levels. I also found that the Fire Department Additional Personnel Policies and Rules 9.2, exhibiting disruptive behavior and/or attitude, were violated in this case. Finally, I found that Captain Gimple violated City of East Bethel and Fire Department Personnel Policies by failing to perform the duties and responsibilities required of a captain with the East Bethel Fire Department. Captain Gimple is an officer with the East Bethel Fire Department. She's been an officer for some time. She was lieutenant and promoted to captain approximately three years ago. She's, holds the rank of captain and indicated to me that she was well aware of the job description and the requirements that a captain provide training opportunities, guidance, and assist fellow firefighters with improving their skills and achieving their individual goals. Copy of that job description is before you, has been provided as Exhibit 6 to my, to my report. It indicates that the responsibilities are to manage and supervise firefighters and to assist company firefighters with developing and achieving their individual goals, and to provide instruct new firefighters on equipment operations, department policies, and operational In speaking with officers with the East Bethel Fire Department, it is a known expectation, it's part of the job description, but it's a known expectation that a officer, and specifically a captain with the East Bethel Fire Department, provide training and instruction to less experienced firefighters. In interviewing the firefighters, it was reported that Captain Gimple fails to provide training, instruction, or opportunities to her fellow firefighters, especially at medical calls. It was universally stated that Captain Gimple was hands-on to a fault, and particularly during medical calls, does not allow any other firefighter to participate in even routine tasks such as taking blood pressures, for example. In my interview with Captain Gimple, she said there are certain circumstances in which she wouldn't allow a younger firefighter or a less experienced firefighter to take a blood pressure. For example, if she was providing nitroglycerin, she would feel that that's her own personal responsibility. But it was reported that other firefighters, younger firefighters, simply do not have the opportunity to do routine tasks and more, even more complicated tasks and grow their skills on calls they attend with Captain Gimple. Firefighters have, and believes that they simply are not being aggressive enough in going about their duties, that they should be, that they should be taking on more of a role, they should know what to do, and that's something that she expressed to Chief Ducharme as well, and you can see that in his summary of the January 14th meeting. Captain Gimple's comments to me in our interview were consistent with the comments she made to Chief Ducharme in that, in that interview as recorded by him. That being said, I find there's sufficient evidence to find that the city of East Bethel Personnel Policy 3.12 has been violated by Captain Gimple. The inability or unwillingness to perform the assigned job, in this case, it's captain with the East Bethel Fire Department, and the inability or unwillingness in this case is the inability or unwillingness to train less experienced officers. Additionally, Fire Department Personnel Policy 9.2 has also been violated by failing to obey lawful orders, carry out instructions, or perform routine duties as assigned. This is to perform the duties that were assigned via the job description and also via the coaching and past instructions from the superior officers to provide opportunities to younger firefighters on scene. So those are the three specific findings and conclusions that I made based on my interviews and reviews of the documents. Now, there's also a bit of employment history that's important here for the council. Captain Gimple was previously disciplined for insubordination in 2016. Exhibit 1 to the report is the letter of discipline from Chief Ducharme stating that Captain Gimple was suspended for failing to follow orders, and he advised her in the future that she needs to follow the orders of superior officers going forward, and the failure to do so may result in disciplinary action up to and including termination. So that is, again, that's Exhibit 1 to my report. So those are the key findings that I've made. Again, I acted as an investigator and fact finder in this case. I can respond to any factual questions, but I will not have any statements or comments or recommendations regarding any discipline in this case. That's the province of the city administrator and the fire chief, not part of my role here.
Would you like to entertain questions from council?
If the council has questions, I will answer them at this time. Otherwise, I will turn it over to the city administrator and fire chief.
Are there questions from council tonight on the report?
I have a question. Was there, am I correct that there were no issues between 2016 and 2021? That after 2016, everything was great until 2021?
I'll state that there was no discipline between 2016 and the present investigation, whether anything happens here or not. The last instance of discipline in Captain Gimple's personnel file was 2016. So.
Were there complaints by other employees that are recorded?
There have been complaints by other employees. There have been instructions provided by Captain Gimple's superior officers. They, they discussed that with me in their interviews, but there's no documented discipline during that time period.
Thank you.
Turn it over to Jack.
Thank you, Steve. Based on the information documented by the investigation and included in the city attorney's reports, the city administrator and the fire chief recommend the city council consider the termination of Captain Gimple for insubordination, failure to perform the duties required of a captain, and creating a disrespectful and disruptive workplace.
And that's concurred by the fire chief?
Yes, Mayor. Excuse me, yes, Mayor, it is.
Ms. Gimple, if you'd like to come forward. You have an opportunity to state what you'd like, question the report, how or statements you'd like to make.
Okay, I wrote a statement, so I'm just gonna read it. It is disappointing and not surprising that certain persons of the fire department have decided to investigate allegations of misconduct without substantiations, instead of preferring to the he said, she said mentality. And so quickly after I asked questions about monies and safety concerning the fire department, my concerns have gone unanswered following the chain of command method, which resulted in speaking with the city administrator and the council. I read that investigation several times and started wanting to once again defend myself to each and every one of the allegations in there, but I've already done that several times in closed-door meetings and emails, and yet I'm still standing here. I decided to instead show you who I really am. The city and the chief are trying to paint a picture, and I take the city out because I know it's in front of you now. I was actually meaning to talk to the audience. The chief and the city attorney are trying to paint a picture of the, that portrays me as an insubordinate captain that disrespects and is hostile towards female colleagues, who leaves them at the station and fails to allow other firefighters to work at scenes. I believe if this investigation was done correctly, it would have been done by an outside agency and not someone representing the city. It would have not been one-sided, and it would have included more than a handful of firefighters. In the city attorney's findings of fact, it is full of opinions, and he said, she said. Fact is supposed to be supported by evidence, and that attorney should know that. In this investigation, I was not allowed representation, a witness, or the ability to record it. This city attorney said it was dishonest, and that is far from the truth. Have you asked yourself why after three or four years that these certain firefighters have been on, that all of a sudden they have an issue with me? Or again, is it maybe because I went to a council meeting with some concerns recently, exposed some things that need to be addressed, that the city and the chief have decided to start this witch hunt? I take my duty seriously. I take my duty seriously, as the many awards and promotions attest to. Even after the letter of suspension where I was a lieutenant, I then became a captain. Training works when people actively participate. An emergency, an emergency situation is not the time for training, and I cannot second-guess my decisions in those emergency situations. Lives in our community depend on each and every one of us knowing what we're doing. Our community shouldn't expect any less. I've sent many emails in regards to our newer firefighters, asking where they are, where they need help and where they need help in training. These insufficiencies have always been discovered during an emergency situation. And one of those email strings to the officers, I was offered to do, I was offering to do more hands-on training with the newer firefighters. And Chief Sano showed firefighter response in that email. This put a huge wedge between me as a captain and my subordinate. I've many emails where I tried doing my duty as a captain only to get undermined by Chief Sano and Chief Anderson. I wrote an email to the entire Fire Department in January 2021, asking for more communication and for officer meetings to start up again. There was one response, and that was from Chief Anderson stating, "We cannot respond to this email, it is your husband's, and he is not a member of the East Bethel Fire Department, nor will we respond in the future." I have had and used that email the entire 17 years of being on the East Bethel Fire Department. That was right at the same time that I was diagnosed with multiple myeloma cancer from the Fire Department. The city and chief, the chief wants you to think this all started November 17, when I was issued an oral coaching, but in reality, this started much before that. The day that I was issued an oral coaching, I was sat down by the chief and told that Chief Sano was disciplined and firefighter Swanson was given a 14-day suspension for their part of a situation that I handled as a captain on a structure fire. Probably the less important but most hurtful thing to me that was presented in this investigation was the accusation that I, Tammy Gimble, Captain 21, and the sole reason morale is down at the Fire Department. I have an email to Jack, to Jack, the city administrator from Chief Ducharme dated July 20th, 2016, that reads, "Ms. Gimble should be removed as leader of the explorers. If the other member cities don't agree, East Bethel needs to drop from the program." That was the same time Chief Ducharme told, that told me that the explorers need to remove their gear and equipment from the station, and he also had all the extra gear the explorers had been given thrown into the dumpster at Station 1. I was notified of this by another firefighter and went and dug it out of the dumpster. I had to bring the explorers to my home and started running the program out of my house. I started the explorers program with a few other firefighters, which is a program that takes high school kids and mentors and teaches them firefighting and leadership skills. We changed the East Bethel Explorers to Engine Company 6 as the young adults that joined the program were from the neighboring six communities. We would go from department to department, and firefighters from all six departments would play a hand in helping instruct these young adults with both firefighting and medical skills. I believe it was both beneficial to the young adults that were being mentored and the firefighters from the departments that participated in the instructing. We had one of those explorers join the East Bethel Fire Department in 2016. He was having some issues in the department, so I met with several chiefs and asked that he be moved to Station 2 so I could keep an eye on him and mentor and help train him, but my request was denied. I started the retirees' lunches on January 6, 2012. We had just had a firefighter retire, and I wanted to honor that with that and him. It actually started out as coffee and cookies but grew to full-blown lunches. We used to have them join the parade for the city and ride on an old antique fire truck that I own. We even took a few outings to the casino and boat tour and opened up our lunches to city council members and deputies. Both the explorers program and one year of the first retiree actual lunches I paid for out of my own pocket. I was and am very proud to have been part of both of those programs. So now to accuse me of all the bad morale in the East Bethel Fire Department is deplorable. I've been accused of not meeting the requirements of captain, and yet at a structure fire on November 6, I did my duty as a captain and took an insubordinate firefighter out of a bad situation and was undermined by Chief Sano. This is a very common occurrence with my dealings with Chief Sano and criticizing my abilities as captain and an EMT. In closing, I'm very disturbed. It's very disturbing to me that my chiefs and the city attorney find the newer firefighters more credible than their 17-year captain. That's all I have.
Do you have anything else to add or questions?
As a, I've been a cap, or a captain now for three years. So I started as lieutenant, firefighter lieutenant, and I moved to captain. I still have lieutenant on my helmet, and I actually brought that in, in one of my meetings to the chief and, and, and said, you know, maybe this is part of the problem. There was, I should have had a captain's badge on my helmet, you know, at least three years ago. I also only had a lieutenant's patch on my jacket. One of the firefighters actually went and bought me a patch that said captain. And, and so I guess what I'm saying is, out of respect, I do, what is being, what is being said and presented is, is not the whole truth. There, there are a lot of things that are missing out of it. This looked like it was one incident where I had a lot of complaints, or a few incidents where there were a lot of complaints, and that's by far the truth. I don't have any other questions, if you have questions for me.
Okay. Any council members have questions directly for Tammy? Guess not. Okay. With that, I'll make a motion that the council uphold the recommendations of our city minister and fire chief for termination of Captain Tammy Gimble from the East Bethel Fire Department based on the facts presented in our city attorney's report. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made second, discussion.
I just want to make some general comments. I don't think anybody's denying that Captain Gimble had a good work ethic and that she did some good things during her tenure as a firefighter. But I think being a firefighter is like being in the military or being a police officer. It requires discipline, a lot of self-discipline, leadership, a spirited core. You have to, it says in the policies that you are responsible for maintaining morale. And some of the comments that were in here about coworkers being, or subordinates being lazy and lacking initiative and other things, whether that's been said to them or not, it shows in your attitude and your actions, and that's, can cost lives, I think. All of these things, all this insubordination, lack of training, it costs lives. And you have to, as a leader, you have to walk people through life-saving things. And I realize that lives are, time is, is set, very essential at the moment, but everybody needs the training and they need that, to feel that adrenaline to save somebody's life. And I also want to say that all this blaming that I've seen throughout these documents and through your comments is, it's not taking ownership and not accepting the directions of the chief is not taking ownership. So, that's, that's just where I, through reading this and through listening to you, that's everything that I've seen.
I'll, I'll echo part of your comments to the, the references to the explorers, to retiree lunches, just the community involvement. You know, that, that, I recall all that. And, but what's a focus tonight is Captain Gimble's actions in terms of the leadership aspects of being a captain, but also being a 17-year veteran. You know, to me, there, there is a duty, whether you're an assigned leader or not, to mentor and to help, because that, that's what helps the organization, that's what helps build. And, and particularly if you're in a leadership role and show disrespect for subordinates, that has a cascade effect. And, and that's where it begins to erode the morale. And, and the fact that this is not a one-time occurrence, you know, I wouldn't say it's been, certainly not the length of, of the time that at least I've known Captain Gimble, but certainly in more recent history, it's, it hasn't been corrected when it's been brought out to be a problem. And that's, and that's part of the focus here tonight, so. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Two to the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Our meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.